Item 7B, I'd like to call this meeting back to order officially. What is it, seven, six forty? And we'll look at number seven C, council business ordinance for our local option income tax. Bottom of my stack. And councillor, what should I do? What's the process on this?
Call for a motion for a first reading.
Okay, let me get agenda out here. All right, I need a motion for the first reading of Warwick County Council Ordinance Number?
Twenty twenty-one dash zero three.
Twenty twenty-one dash zero three.
I'll make a motion for the first reading.
I'll second. Motion by Brad and Chris, did you second?
Ron.
Ron did, okay. Okay. And then do I read it by title?
Yes, please.
Warwick County Council Ordinance Number twenty twenty-one dash oh-three. An ordinance of the County Council of Warwick County, Indiana, modifying local income tax rates. Do I read further?
Yes, because it deals with a change in rates.
Be it ordained by the Warwick County Council of Warwick County, Indiana, the council, that a need now exists to adopt certain local income tax rates imposed within Warwick County, Indiana, in the following way. Allocation rate categories: certified share zero in existing and proposed, public safety existing is zero, that would be zero point five percent, the proposed public safety lit rate, economic development existing zero point five percent, and that will remain, the proposed lit rate will remain at zero point five percent. Property tax relief, both of them zero percent, special purpose tariff, both of them zero percent, correctional rehabilitation facilities, both of them zero percent. The local income tax rates proposed above will be effective on October first, twenty twenty-one. Be it further ordained, or be it further ordained that a public hearing was held on the proposed local income tax rate modification on July the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Proposed notice of the public hearing was provided pursuant to Indiana Code five dash three dash one. Now it's up for council discussion and motions.
Motion first or discussion?
Uh, discussion, I'll just open up discussion. Anybody have anything? If not, I'll call for a motion.
I certainly have a lot to say. If nobody else wants to, I figure we all have a lot of thoughts. And while I was sitting here listening to everyone speak, I asked myself a question. And I'm going to answer that question. The question was, who are you going to call? It's sure not going to be the Ghostbusters. It's going to be you guys. That's who I'm going to call. I've got here in this bag, I've got a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and eighteen supporting emails, probably came from a lot of people in this room. Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to do it. It appears to be harder to get somebody to write an email than it does to get them to run into a burning building. Because I really, when we got twelve against, must be real hard to get somebody to write an email. But people, sometimes people want to discount this and say, well, this was written by people who are first responders. Well, yeah, yeah, sure, you got an interest in this. I wouldn't expect a stranger to send me an email about it, someone from Terre Haute. Who knows anybody from Terre Haute? What would they do? I've also got here, guys, the, I've got a letter from the Warwick County Chamber of Commerce, letter from the Warwick County Commissioners, got a letter from the mayor of Boonville, so I'll come back to that, letter from the Boonville City Council, the Warwick County Republican Party Chairman, got the Ohio Township trustee, Newburgh Town Manager, Newburgh Town Council. Guys, I've been doing nothing but talking this for a long time now, listening mostly because I don't have a lot of input. So all I could really do is listen. Shoot, I sat down with the mayor of Boonville about thirty minutes or so to hear his thoughts on this. After our meeting, it prompted him to reissue a letter that he had already sent to this council. It also prompted him to get with his town council and submit a letter of support. In the mayor's letter, he assured us all that he's going to use this money for public safety issues. I appreciate that, appreciate that that time was taken. I also went to a Newburgh Town Council meeting, and I sat through their meeting, I talked to them and the people that were present, they had maybe a dozen people there, and listened to what they had to say. And I was assured by the Newburgh Town Council that they were behind this one hundred percent, even so much that they went ahead and, this morning, we all got a letter from the Newburgh Town Council, signed by all of them, saying that they support this one hundred percent. Wow, if I can't trust these people, the people that elected all of these folks, and they're all saying this is needed, who can I trust? Really? And if the voters trusted them, and I trust them, I sure do. And I'll also say this, one last thing, guys, as I'm going through all this and I've talked to each one of you, and I've talked to a lot of you, and I went to the Judicial Center yesterday and I talked to about thirty people there, and they're not first responders, they're working in the Judicial Center. And one of the best beggone messages I got, wasn't one of these emails, one of the best was this one. Young man half my age, while I was listening to what they all had to say, young man walked up to me and handed me this, put it in my pocket. He walked, anyway, all it says is, yay. I think he's asking me to vote yay. I like that, I'm going to save this. So I also took myself, guys, doing all this, you guys heard me on the phone, I talked to you, each one of you separately. We don't have a public safety local income tax. What? Public safety is the first thing we should provide, not the last. Why is this taking till two thousand twenty-one? Let's vote this in. That's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thought, I gotta stand for this. Thank you, I should have started this way, I'm sorry.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, so I'd just like to make, you know, I guess I always do have to get something in. So, you know, I've been in the council aisle for quite a while, and I feel like I've always tried to be a pretty good voice of reason for most things. And so, you know, I mean, this is not something that I think anyone up here is taking lightly. I mean, and I can't speak for everybody, but after working with a lot of you for quite a while now, I've got a pretty good understanding, at least how most of you kind of operate. And, you know, and that's one thing that I've always tried to do here, is just try to, try to do what I think's the right thing. And when you take a look at the information that's been supplied, I mean, if I want to go get information about a, you know, a disease, or if I want to get any information about an attorney's, about a case that I would take to court, I mean, I'm going to go to a doctor, I'm going to go to an attorney, and, you know, same thing, I mean, you want to speak to the people that understand what they're faced with. And, you know, when these people come forward, I mean, I'm going to put my trust in them that they're the experts on that. I mean, if I wanted to learn, you know, you go to a religious institution to learn about, you know, whatever religious, you know, whoever you're planning on worship. And so I think that's where we're, we're at to that point. We've asked the experts for their opinion and they've given us that. And, you know, the thing has been, you know, if you notice through all of these, I mean, they've all asked for additional funding. And, you know, it's not as if any of them have came up here and just pleading for, hey, you know, give me more money, you know, raise my salary, raise my salary, I'm going to walk away from doing these things. And, you know, and I think that's the thing, we've needed, we need to support these folks. And I thought the interesting thing when Chief Deputy Cruz came up was, one of the things he talked about not seeing, but, you know, it's just like with his vest, you know, that the officers have, you know, we don't see their vests, we don't think about their shoes, we don't think about these things. And those are some of the hidden things that go, that, you know, you don't realize the cost of equipment and uniforms, you know, they get into an altercation, they've got to get those things paid for as well. And, and just like, you know, Chris said, you know, when you call people, you want the experts to respond to you. And just, you know, if you're out in Tennessean and I'm driving back and forth quite a bit to my work now, so you see these distances that we're traveling and you think about that, I mean, you know, honestly, I don't want to have to always rely on myself to take care of every single thing that happens, you know, I don't want to try to put out a, you know, a fire if I got loose in my backyard, or if I needed to have law enforcement come to investigate something. I mean, I really should be, you know, probably one of the last persons to respond to that, even though, you know, I feel like in some things you can take care of yourself. But, I mean, I really think we need to listen to the experts. And, and I think nowadays in society, we hear so much of this rhetoric from people just saying things that are half-truths, and they're wanting to blame people for things that, you know, we, we just hear all of this. And I think it's better when we actually sit down and listen to facts and think about things reasonably, you know, and I mean, it's where we kind of need to, to sit back and, and have some clear minds and think about stuff. And, and I think if we kind of sit back and look at this, I mean, and we could, we could sit here and bicker back and forth for, you know, whether it's thirty-nine percent, or half a percent, or three tenths of a percent, or however we want to do that, I mean, it's kind of, we're kind of nickel and diming, and yes, some of you office holders may say that I've nickled and dimmed you before, so I mean, maybe, maybe there is some truth to that. But, you know, I think we have to take a look at this, and the fact that, you know, thirty-two years ago, we're going back on the history of this tax, so I really think it's something we need to kind of set back and, and think about these things. And it's an ever-changing world, and we are growing in this town, in this county, and I think we have to view that as a county as whole, and try not to just necessarily pick certain areas apart. I mean, we have to look at this as one group together and not try to kind of pit certain parts of the county against each other. And, you know, that's probably something we should probably think about, even in a broader sense, in the country as whole, maybe we should all try to come together a little bit more. But, so that's just kind of my thoughts, and this is definitely not something that I take lightly, but, you know, when I, when I try to get good information, you go to the people that understand what the, what the issues are, so I'll be rid of that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, we, we started this approximately twenty minutes ago, as far as, we learned about it a little sooner than it was, could be, but we kind of started talking about it, and I myself started learning a little more about it. And then, beginning of last year, we met on it, few of you done your presentations on it, and as people that I spoke with, most people were respectful, some were disrespectful. But in the last year, you know, especially this year, been flooded with emails and phone calls. When it first come about, it was probably about fifteen percent to eighty-five percent against the tax. And, you know, I'm kind of wondering why, what's going on? Well, then I found out to a little bit, people get behind and say, hey, you know, email your councilman and say, we don't want it. Over the last two months, been getting flooded with emails. I can't understand where you guys' book is a lot less than mine would probably be if I printed them all out. Because I'm probably getting a hundred, hundred or better every day in the last few weeks. Hey, believe it or not, folks, I openly read every one of them, some people's too chicken to add their name to it, because they're afraid of me calling back, and a few of them have called. But anyway, a lot of the misinformation, you know, people call, you know, I'm on fixed income, I can't afford any more taxes, and either go through email, if they did leave the phone number, call them back and try to explain to them exactly what it is. But a lot of, well, most, probably the most common email that we get, or that I've gotten, that people want better response times, especially in the outlying areas. And we've heard that fifteen or, I don't know, twenty times for all the presentations that's, that's been made. That's the most thing that most people want. Most people leave an email and say, I'm for the tax and won't give you anything else about it. But some of the negatives have got it, and most of these have come from phone calls, and probably eighty percent of the people I know them have called me, even though my number's on the coun, uh, council website. But, and even some of the emails, folks, you know, it's, and it's kind of been a pet peeve of mine since I've been on the council, but a personal use of it. And the people in the public see it, see it, realize it. How come a sheriff's vehicle is in Vanderburg County? I don't have a thing to do with it. Well, how come they need more money then? How come a sheriff's pickup is delivering kids to school or to daycare? Folks, I don't have a thing to do with it. You know, and I guess, and people do see it. And I, like I say, it's, that, that's a little nay that most people want to bring up about. And the only other thing I can say, how come you want to go into it full bore as for the four point five? We originally, as far as the economic development tax, done a point three five, and then we increased it to a point five. We'd kind of mowed it over a little bit ten, twelve years ago, about reduced the backs after we had a bunch of things paid for, but we never did reduce it. And that's the same thing, as far as I would like to see, and you've all explained how you want to spend your money, but some people already spent it before you've got it, but that's about the, how come we want to have to go full bore at once? I quit.
Okay. Anyone else?
Is he resigning tonight?
Very possible, very possible.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
I'd like to say a couple of things. I definitely made the motion last week to get this ball going and to get things moving. I live in the outlying areas and live out by Bluegrass, where it does take twenty, twenty-five minutes to get a response from anyone, because you live further out. But I choose to do that, and I understand it and I know that. And so I'm, I'm trying to work at fixing that to a certain degree as much as I can. But those of us who live out in those outlying areas understand that we're going to have a slower response time, and we appreciate everything that our public safety people do for us. And, and I'm very happy, actually, I've got three EPD people who live in our area, and I'm happy, almost every day I see their cars going home, and I'm thrilled about it because my crime level down there is very, very low, because there's a lot of police officers traveling through that area whether they live there or not. So it makes a big, big difference in that. But we've been given the opportunity to do this for ourselves without state help. And as we mentioned earlier in two thousand and ten, when they did the property tax freezes, and I was part of that, even though I came in just at that time. But this is what we've been given the opportunity to do as a, as a county, to take it care of ourselves. And even if we do this, on the surrounding counties, I did a little quick calculation, just the surrounding ten counties here will be higher, only higher than two still, in, in counties. All the other counties locally from us are going to be higher than we are, are the same rate that we are for public safety. So only Gibson and Spencer will be lower than what we are going to be if we pass this tax. So, so I don't think that's going to be an issue in that part. And so I'm just very happy to, to get this ball rolling. I worked six years as the coroner, I saw the response time, I saw dispatch, mostly on a daily basis at times on what they went through. Because if I was there besides making calls, we were there doing reports and so forth. So I understand what goes on at dispatch and what their needs are. And I can't believe that they're still operating with the same numbers of what they're doing now. I understand that the, the police, the sheriff only have so many deputies and they can only take care of so many people. And those of us in the outlying areas where I have, my township's only got a thousand people, so it's going to be difficult to say, our thousand people are going to have the same needs as Ohio Township, which has an ungodly amount of people, that I tell Chad that, he's got too many people out there he needs to share, is, yeah. So, and that's why I brought this and brought the motion to begin with, and, and definitely going to vote for it, and appreciate everything the rest of you guys have done. And I appreciate everybody who's come today and brought their opinions, and, and all of you. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the first reading of this ordinance? I think we ought to probably do a roll call. I've been asked to do that, if that's all right?
Sure. Ron Bacon?
Yes.
David Hockmeister?
No.
Ted Medsker?
Nay.
Brad Oberton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Okay, that's five ayes and two nays. So the first reading passes, we still have a second reading that will be at our August meeting. Thank you. Again, I appreciate everybody coming, you don't have to stay, but you're welcome to.
I leave.
Yeah. I understand.
But again, that's nothing I meant to business, just like in the last round, we all finished the board.
Yeah, it's all right, thank you. Well, not yet. We have approval of minutes.
Hey, hold it down, folks. Hey.
We take conversation outside, appreciate everybody being here. We got to get the rest of this meeting over with. The approval of minutes is up first, I read them, they're all okay with me, I forgot to tell you that, sorry about that. So Rick moves. Is there a second?
Seven.
Second by Ron. All those in favor? It's all seven of us, seven zero. Right, that's Commissioner Business is up next, I believe. And we have Communications, thirty-two thousand dollars, Workman's Comp, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, total Commissioners, thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Good evening, councilman, councillor, Crystal. The Communications, and we put in the new phone system based on the funds that the council provided for us, and we were promised substantial savings in these communications, mainly the phone. David Shipley is owner of Midwest Telecom, which put in the new system. We basically are finding that the main reason we're not realizing those savings, and we're short for the rest of the year, is due to the fact that the mainstream broadband has not been installed yet, nor do we know what kind of rate we're going to get when that does happen. So David, I ask him to weigh in on this, and that's his primary reason. Other has to do with the fact that we didn't get on a, on a contract with an internet, the Commissioners had that further consideration to lower that cost. So what we found, Suzie in our offices, our council payable, she looked at the recent bills, averaged them out four thousand dollars a month, and the council sees fit to appropriate the bulk of the funds to pay for phone services in the Commissioners' budget. So, and we extrapolated that out, and this is the amount that we need to get to at the end of the year. So I don't know, you know, you guys may know the broadband schedule better than I do, so I don't know when that's going to happen, but we should see some savings.
They're still testing it, aren't they?
Basically, they're just doing punch list items, and that conversation is open with the county now about their buildings and their needs.
Okay, thank you. I asked Steve Rowley, he confirmed some things.
Thank you, Eric. You want to discuss the other one as well?
Workman's Comp, yeah.
Yes, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six. This is primarily to pay for the work comp audit premium, and I work with the Commissioners for next year's budget, we're going to build that into our request. This comes about every year, but, but it's been varying amounts. The, there are, in addition to the Commissioners that have work comp in their line item, in their budgets, it's in the sheriff's office, highway, parks department, stormwater and health, those latter two have a very small portion that they pay. Commissioners pay the bulk for the work comp, which is required by Indiana law. The rates can depend on what's called the mod factor, which is, which is primarily determined by our claims. Right now, we're in a, really, not on wood, but our claims experience this year's been good. We haven't had to pay out a lot of work comp claims. So with the, Suzie took and, and with the other departments and offices having their share, was able to get it down to the, what I feel is the low amount of seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six to, to get us paid for work comp for the rest of the year.
Any questions by the board? Need a motion?
Motion to approve both.
Or a motion.
Total, however you want to look at it.
Motion by David, who has a second. Second by Brad, to approve the total amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. All those in favor? It's all seven of us, seven zero, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is soil and water conservation here?
Oh, she, she called me this week and they wanted to remove from the agenda because it was the budget they wanted to talk about, and they realized they have a date.
Come to the budget meeting, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, Health Department, Health Business, sick and vacation day payout, seven thousand thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Talked about that at our last meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, it's just official approval.
Motion by Brad, second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's all seven of us, seven zero. Superior Court Business, Superior Court One, additional appropriation law books, ten thousand dollars.
Evening, gentlemen. Zach Wintsett, Judge, Superior Court One. We ask for ten thousand in the budget every year for law books. We spend that, or come back and ask for a little bit more. Law books keep getting more and more expensive, I keep cutting out more and more books, yet we keep spending the same amount of money, so the price of them are really going up. But what happened last year is, we had a big bill from two thousand and twenty that didn't get paid until two thousand and twenty-one, so it cut into our two thousand and twenty-one budget. We only spent five thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars last year. We were usually spend the whole ten. So, right now, we only have three hundred and thirty-four dollars, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars in there, and we've got outstanding bills of over three thousand dollars. So we're asking for ten, hopefully we won't have to use it, all of that, and I'll keep doing everything I can to use online resources and try to save as much money as I can on those. They are necessary for the operation of the court, and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Is this still mandatory for each judge's office to have their own set of books?
It's not mandatory.
And it used to not have.
I think it's necessary for our operation, and I know the magistrate uses my library. And in fact, and I'm, I'm only down to the statutes, just the statutes, but it's got to annotate it. So you may, may have one page of statute and a hundred pages of case law and annotation that comes with that. And I'm not sure if the other courts still keep those expensive set, you know, of leather-bound law books. I'm, I'm just not sure.
Everything you get, you get digital?
I, I have a lot in digital, but the books on the annotated statutes, I think, are just necessary. It's, it's very difficult, if anyone's ever, anyone's ever read the Bible, you end up sticking your finger somewhere and then you flip somewhere else, and, and so I do that with the law reference books all the time, because I've got my finger on one statute and then it says, it references another statute, and I flip to another statute, and I just get there a hundred times quicker than I do on the internet. And maybe, I'm forty-five and I feel old school, but maybe I still need that one set of law books to, it, it keeps me working more efficiently. So moved.
Motion by Rick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It's all seven.
It's all seven of us, seven zero, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good night.
Superior Court Business, Bennett Jury, five thousand dollars.
All right, I got a, just got a text from him, hold on. He said he had to go out of town. And his additional is on the agenda for juror fees for the trial, the murder trial that is upcoming and he needs that appropriation.
Motion by Rick, is there a second? Second by Brad. Discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Attorney's Claim, this is COVID reimbursable, right?
Yes.
And that's three thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's all seven of us, seven zero. Then we have two salary ordinances, one of them is for the Sheriff's Retirement, four thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and one cent. And can we do them both together? Purchasing Agent, again, Retirement, one thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-two cents are both handbooks.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Now we have a Library Board appointee, because Lisa Virus has moved out of the district, they recommend Janet Metzger, most of us know her.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? So, you're not gonna vote?
Yeah.
For it?
No.
No, okay, so I have six votes for and one against Ted Metzger. She not related to you, is she?
I don't think so, no.
No, but maybe, okay.
Depends on how far back you want to go.
Yeah. Okay, and I think that's it unless there's any other business coming for us. Motion. Okay, that motion was by Rick, second by Brad, all those in favor, all seven of us.
Jeanne Lee, before you sign, I see you trying to get up. I have two things, the minutes and the appropriations. And I put your budget binders on your desk if you have any questions, but, you know.
You have the meeting dates on there?
Yeah, on the very back.
She's from Gibson County.
Yeah, it's back to your binder.
She was from Gibson County originally. Well, she's married to a brand. Well, we got two more.
Over you?
Yeah. The ordinance and, and something else. On the reading.
I responded to you, or I sent it to you.
I left a smile. It may have been black.
It's in there somewhere. I think it says, yeah, I'll put another one in. Send me information. I've already printed their package and all.